Ms. Pranga, we are live and we are streaming on YouTube. We may proceed.
Good morning, everyone. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for January twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. We will begin with adjournments. Calendar number one sixty dash zero eight dash B Z six fifty one dash six seventy one Fountain Avenue, Brooklyn. Calendar number two thousand and nineteen dash two fifty six dash B Z fifteen oh eight Avenue Z, Brooklyn. Calendar number two thousand and twenty two dash seventy eight dash B Z fifteen twelve Union Street, Brooklyn. Calendar number two thousand and twenty three dash twenty three dash B Z two ninety five Exeter Street, Brooklyn. The furrows. Calendar number two thousand and seventeen dash two sixty two dash B Z eighteen Stanwick Street, Brooklyn. Calendar number eight dash zero four dash B Z seventy eight dash fifteen Parsons Boulevard, Queens. Calendar number two thousand and twenty one dash seventy one B Z one oh five dash thirty one Seventy Sixth Street, Queens. Decision items. Calendar number eighty four dash oh eight dash B Z seven sixty seven dash twenty Main Street, AKA sixty eight dash twelve Main Street, Queens.
So the applicant has removed the banners and has revised the plan to indicate the material of the fence and photos have been provided. Is everybody satisfied with the revision? And then the motion to approve. Oh, go ahead.
I was of the photos I saw, it looked like the wall did need a brush coat of paint. On that last photo.
So I will then modify it and I would, is it okay for us to approve it with the condition?
I'm okay with that.
Then I make a motion to approve the condition that the applicant the condition of the building by painting it as soon as possible, once the weather improves.
Okay, motion to approve. Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Shata.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
Motion is granted. The next item is one zero, calendar number one zero nine eight dash eighty three B Z one forty seven dash ten Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. It's going for my notes. At the last hearing, we actually, at the last decision case, when we were, when he had, when we had scheduled, we noticed that there were still some elements that were left outside and and were blocking the pedestrian walkway. Specifically, the ice chest, it has been removed. Photos were provided. And the applicant has also revised the site plan indicating the the location of the trash can would be a masonry finish five foot high enclosure which would be located at the corner. Is everybody okay with that revision? So my question is, do you want to proceed with approving it with the condition or do you want the applicant to masonry?
I I I found that the applicant has been responsive, so I think we can approve with the condition.
I agree with you. I think throughout this entire process, as the site was all the investigation, the environmental investigation was completed. The applicant did remove a lot of the sheds and unnecessary structures that were located in the rear in response to it. So I feel confident that the applicant would respond to this and provide the trash enclosure. So if everybody's okay with it, this is my suggestion. Is everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, then I would suggest that we make, we approve this to extend the term with the condition that the trash enclosure per approved plan shall be constructed prior to obtaining a C O and that C O must be obtained within eighteen months from the date of the grant. Is that acceptable to everybody?
That is, and they're gonna, they're gonna build that fashion closure according to the latest.
The, yeah, that's what I said, as per the approved plan and the approved plan, uh, plan that we, the plan that we will be approving shows a masonry finished trash enclosure that is five foot high proposed, proposed at the corner, the rear corner.
Perfect, thank you.
If that is acceptable to all, then that's the motion I'm proposing to approve with the condition that I just stated.
Okay. Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Shata.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
Application is granted. Calendar number two thousand and sixteen dash forty two seventy one B Z two oh one Hampton Avenue, Brooklyn.
So this was for an extension of time, so there was no submission requirement for this. I make a motion to approve with a two-year extension of time.
Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Shata.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
Application is granted. Calendar number two thousand and twenty one dash thirty five dash B Z. This must be deferred.
Fortunately, we have to defer it. We just received some additional comments from D E P. Those need to be responded to.
Calendar number two thousand and twenty one dash forty one dash B Z twenty two thirty eight Coming Street, Manhattan.
Okay, so as you recall, board members, the, we had closed this hearing because we felt the revised project, that is an eight-story, eighty-nine-foot-high residential building with with forty-nine onsite accessory parking spaces met the findings of seventy twenty twenty-one. The waiver that the applicant is seeking is a reduction of off-street parking, which for this zoning lot would require sixty-one spaces. The applicant is proposing forty-nine. And that it exceed and waiver of the height limit, height limit on this side would be eighty feet and the proposed building would be exceeding by nine feet. So there's been a significant shave down of the project that the applicant initially proposed based on the site conditions and we were awaiting for the environmental sign-off. We finally have that, including sign-off from Landmarks Preservation Commission with regards to his archaeological also. And so if everybody's okay with it, I want to make a motion to approve with the following conditions, and these conditions are related to archaeological. That in the event the scope of work changes or previously undocumented archaeological resources are encountered during construction activities, the applicant must return to the B S A and the Landmarks Preservation Commission for additional review. That failure to comply with this restriction shall constitute a violation of this resolution and may serve as a basis for denial or remuneration of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy for all other applicable remedies seized on your division section seventy-two. No, seventy-two twenty-two, sorry. And finally, that the construction activities shall be conducted in accordance with the applicable laws and regulations, including the Unmarked Burial Site Protection Act Bill Number S zero zero four zero zero five. So with that, I make a motion to grant.
Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Shata.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
Application is granted.
And I want to thank our B S A team and the Landmarks Preservation Team, actually, everybody, all our city agencies, but more importantly, our B S A team, Ms. Jala Prangad, Tracy, Carlo, they have been working chase, they've been working tirelessly on, in getting this project and working with all the other applicants. I really want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Calendar number two thousand and twenty-three dash ten B Z twenty-two thirteen East Fourteenth Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. Where are we? So we did receive revised plans and now the building is set back ten feet from East Fourteenth Street with a reduced side yard in the rear, which is now thirty-nine foot, still very much within the permitted realm. And the applicant has revised a statement of fact and the zoning analysis also has been revised. In addition, a note has been added to the plan that the existing concrete wall that is encroaching on both the sidewalks along Avenue V and Fourteenth Street will be removed during demolition. Did everybody look at the revised plan? I think we received it on Friday, which had the all the corrections.
It was submitted for the second time Friday.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, right. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so if everybody's okay with it, I then make a motion to approve with the condition that the existing concrete wall encroaching on the sidewalks along Fourteenth Street and Avenue V shall be removed during demolition and shall be part of the demolition permit plan. The demolition plan to get a permit.
Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
I.
Commissioner Shata.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
Application is approved. Second. Now we will continue with the special order calendar continued hearings. Calendar number two forty-one dash seventy-two dash B Z one thirty-two dash one thirty-six East Thirty-seventh Street and two eighty-one to eighty-seven Lexington Avenue, Manhattan.
The initial hearing on this application was held on August seventh and the board had expressed concern about the initial design and directed the applicant to provide more specifics that would make the space inviting, secured. And I think we all acknowledge that this is a very difficult site. Difficult arcade area to activate. With that in mind, the applicant has submitted a revised plan. And it is in the right direction and I do appreciate the effort the applicant has put in. However, I just have a couple of comments. And that is that this public space, as I stated, is very difficult space to activate during the existing due to the existing design with many columns, relatively low ceiling heights, and that the area is raised above the street, which affects the accessibility and especially visibility, and that comes towards security and safety measures. Now, what one may feel within the area. Addition of lights and artwork that the applicant has proposed along with repainting the ceiling, cleaning the travertine wall will make the space definitely more visible and inviting. And providing a transparent wall that is lower in height will also minimize the caged-in feeling the initial plan had proposed. I I though remain skeptical about the multipurpose use of the space which is still chopped up by these columns, which cannot be removed and and makes the visibility a little bit of an issue unless there is an entity that is interested in programming this space. The applicant stated that, you know, this could be used for yoga, outdoor yoga activities, but someone has to take ownership and and interest in that unless the building itself has a gym and their program will extend into this arcade area for activities. And that is one thing, or it would be conducted by some community-based organization where anybody can take part in and it's going to be a regular calendar schedule that that everybody knows about. That's another thing. But right now, I think the proposal, it's still is weak. And I mean, I personally think it may not be a bad space for children's play area. You know, children's are, children are pretty creative with all these columns around. I can see them running around the column, playing hide and seek and things like that. So you know, if you can get a daycare facility either within the building, if it is located, or in the nearing area for them to use it. You know, just these are food for thought for you to keep in mind when you're trying to work with when you're trying to activate this space. Otherwise, all the effort that the building is going to put in to improve this site may not bear the result that you're trying to achieve. So I would like to know if any outreach has been made to any organizations to activate this space. I'm also not sure providing all these seedings will make this big inviting and be used unless it is tied to an active retail use in the building from where, let's say, you know, it's a small cafe or some eatery, you take that food from there and you set out, sit in that arcade area. Because that particular frontage of Lexington does not have that much of active retail space from where there could be a possible spill over and somebody wanting to use that arcade area. I also wanted to know, I mean, I, the plan shows a lot of existing cameras and I wanted to know if the existing cameras really serve does cover the entire area. Would it make sense to reposition the camera to provide more visibility and and safety coverage? That's just a question I have if they have considered that. And and does the building management have any say regarding the use of the S S M A space, which is vacant? And what is the status and the reason I'm asking this question is that when B S A granted the initial waiver, the zoning lot included the S S M A lot. And so as part of that, I I think there is certain amount of possibilities of ensuring that the S S M A use can also help activate the arcade space. But I understand it's a very daunting task and I do appreciate the effort the applicant and the architect has made. But these are my thoughts to make it, make the space even better and active, hopefully. Vice Chair Shabeta.
All right, thank you, Chair. I appreciate your comments. I have nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ottley Brown.
I was very pleased to see the revised plans with the movable glass panels and the mural and the landscape planters. I think it's definitely more inviting and I think that's what we were trying to do, move them towards making it less like a prison downstairs and more inviting to the community. So I have no other comment.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Shata.
Thank you, Chair. The only thing I had last hearing was regarding the fencing. I did ask them to like revise the statement of facts and elaborate on the description of the parents, how they work. However, in this submission, they provided rendering shown the fencing and description. I'm satisfied with that, but if they can like add something to the statement of facts to that like regard, that would be helpful as well. That's all what I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I was also pleased with the revision and I'm satisfied with the proposal that they have to add decorative lighting and glass fencing and seating. They do mention in their cover letter that for programming, they have reached out to a number of neighborhood entities. They list five, including the community board, but that the programming would be to be determined because it would be dependent on actually completing the work. So just want to make a note that they did talk about that in their cover letter.
Okay.
And I think at the last hearing, they stated that the S S M A space is totally out of their control and separately owned. And it's for sale by a separate owner. So they can confirm that. That's what I have in my notes from the last
Okay.
hearing.
Yes, true. However, from a zoning point of view, this is part of the zoning lot. And I do understand that the the floor area, unused floor area from the S S M A was used in building the residential portion of the building. However, it is part of the zoning lot and I think it is an opportunity that the applicant should should look at and and I I I don't know who the, if S S M A can help facilitate that in the process of the sale. I mean, it is, it's kind of a dead part of Lexington Avenue. So activating that street foundation may not be a bad idea, first of all. And if in that process, you can also help strengthen the the elements of the arcade and use the arcade as an as a benefit. I I think it 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 just serves both entities, I I think. So just think creatively and possibility, but I I I completely understand the limitations of the space, the columns and all of that. You can't change that. Within that, what can you do and what they're proposed is definitely better than what we initially see. Okay, thank you. Next case.
Hi, sorry about that. New cases on the special order calendar. Calendar number one twenty-two dash ninety-five dash B Z one fifty-two sixty-five Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, proof of service of initial filing is not required. This is an, this is an extension of time. Applicant seeking is is seeking an extension of time to obtain a certificate of occupancy of a previously approved variance to permit a warehouse and truck terminal which expired on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and also seeking a waiver of board's rule. I have to say, I was extremely happy to see the, what the building, the construction looks like. I was on the board and I think some of my fellow members here were also on the board when we were trying to when the applicant was requesting an extension of hours, it was limited to certain hours, the prior variance, and it was changed to twenty-four seven. And as a result of that, we were concerned about the noise attenuation and visibility and it was really a kind of a ground-up design that happened, collaborative ground-up design that happened between the board and the applicant's team. And we always use this as an example in many of our cases where we have noise issues and it is good to see this project finally being built in the way we were envisioning in our mind when when it was being put together. So I'm glad to see that ninety percent of the construction is complete. There are few outstanding elements. And I think the applicant also needs to strike the outdoor parking space. And the applicant is seeking a one-year extension of time to obtain the C O. So I, first of all, I want to thank the property owner for taking our comments and recommendation and doing this construction, really appreciate it. And yeah, I have no additional comments. I'm very happy to see this project coming along so well. Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I found this was a reasonable request and I have no objection to it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ottley Brown.
I also was very pleased to see them implement all of the design suggestions that we had decided upon. And the project, it's looking great. I'm very satisfied. No other comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Shata.
Thank you, Chair. Although like most of the projects that I always brag about are structural and geotech, but this one is about noise, but I I would brag about this project. The noise study was very like innovative that was done on this project. The applicant was, I wouldn't say cooperative, I would say an amazing applicant. They they did something like, not in the book, it's not done every day. And now they implemented it. So I'm I'm glad to see it. I have no comments. And I'm eager actually to hear back from the applicant environmental engineer about the performance of the design that we each, so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I have no comments on this case.
Thank you. Next.
Next case is calendar number one eighty-nine dash twelve B Z ninety-eight Montague Street, Brooklyn. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but.
That's correct. So this is also an extension of time and proof of service of initial filing and hearing notice is not required. The applicant is seeking a four-year extension of time to complete construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy of a previously approved variance of for use, which expired on November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. As you may recall, this is an existing fourteen-story old historic hotel with a restaurant. The hotel is already in operation. I was doing a Google search and already it seems to be in operation. However, the restaurant part is not, it's a, it's not associated with, it's not being run by the hotel entity. It would be a separate entity. And the applicant is stating the reason for the delay in getting the the portion of the building that contains the restaurant ready. Actually, I think, I don't think they have a they have a they have a an entity who is, has expressed interest in operating the restaurant yet.
A tenant here.
All right. So and and the delay was related to the complexity of the building's historic, historic restoration, financial difficulty and COVID nineteen. So the lender is seeking to, for, seeking a buyer for this site to complete the construction. As I mentioned, ninety-five percent of the work is complete. There is a T C O, which I believe, which is for the hotel portion. It does not reflect the restaurant space. And the applicant is seeking a four-year extension of time to complete construction and obtain C O. The only thing I do want to point out that the applicant in his latest letter, cover letter, stated that they needed decision by February twelfth to meet the deadline related to the loan on the property. And all of that is necessary to complete the construction and open the hotel. As I mentioned, I think the hotel is in operation because that's what I gathered from the Google search. So I would like to know the outstanding work, if it is only related to the restaurant portion. And I would like a little bit more clarity regarding the timeline, as specifically in securing a buyer. And is it the buyer's responsibility to improve the restaurant or they would seek a tenant who would be running the restaurant, which would be separate from the hotel? So and also if there are any violations associated with this site. I don't think I saw any, but I would like the applicant to confirm that. Vice Chair Shabeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I am satisfied with this application. I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ottley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shata.
Thank you, Chair. I share the comment regarding the violation. I have it in my notes. I did also want one of them to provide some interior photos for the parts that were completed and the parts that were not. I I believe the date they are referring to is not related to like sitting or buying. I believe it's something related to that, like their communication with the bank and foreclosure issue and that's, that's what I understood from the submission. Maybe we can like clarify that. But I have no further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I went to the site on January fourth. Thank you. Um I went to the site on January fourth, and it does not seem like it's in operation. So.
Oh, it does not?
No, no, there's there permits on the doors. There's still a stop work order taped to the front door. Um it there didn't seem to be an obvious point of entry. I walked around the both frontages. And uh there were still construction through inside and the elevator banks. Um it looks like construction is very, very close to complete. Finishes are in, floors are in. The uh ceilings and the ground floor are beautiful from the sidewalk, but.
It is beautiful.
Yeah, uh but it did not seem like there was anyone occupying.
Okay, so because I did a Google search and it it for the hotel at this site, it talks about all the rooms and the photos and everything provided. So maybe it's just the.
From before.
Uh maybe it's to get the ball rolling.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
That's possible. Okay.
I had no other comments on this, though.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh next case, please. Uh, I'll hear you, Ms. Panga.
Sorry about that. Uh the appeals calendar is next. Continued hearings, item number, uh I'm sorry, calendar number two thousand eighteen dash one eighty-eight A and two thousand eighteen one eighty-nine A, one ninety-four dash twenty-eight and one ninety-four dash thirty-two Dunton Avenue, Queens. Um and Tony did circulate a letter from the Department of Transportation on this this morning.
Yeah, so it seems we have a dropped a letter from um DOT. And uh there are still some clarification that um DOT DOT is requiring on the plan. And in addition to that, um I'm just trying to um just bear with me. I'm trying to locate the draft letter.
Sharing it on the screen now if you want to look at it.
Yeah, um I just want to read read some of the conditions that the uh DOT is proposing, that there be no parking allowed on either uh uh curb side of Dunton Avenue in order to maintain a safe two-way operation. And that needs to be reflected in this plan. And uh that the builder's pavement plan for the entire development side uh was administratively closed on January twenty eighteen due to inaction. So therefore, a new builder's pavement plan needs to be filed, which I thought has been filed. I mean, that's why I thought that's the new review, so uh which would require DUP review and sign off. So I think we, I I'm a little confused about why DOT is asking for a new builder's plan because my understanding is the the applicant hired a new architecture firm to revise the plans and to submit it. And uh and DOT is requiring a full plan to verify the curb to curb street width on each uh uh street is within um uh the entire um details of the proposed traffic island and on all the others. So um I think the Pal- Palermo, Palermo is no longer part of the the GCL thirty-five. I think that's been dropped out. So I I I think the applicant needs to work with DOT and clarify the reduced scope of the uh of the ask before the board. And therefore, the builder's pavement plan should be just for the GCL thirty-five. Um I think, um so yeah, I maybe the applicant can shed some light. Those are my initial thoughts reading this letter, which we just got this morning. So um any um questions or thoughts on this, Vice Chair Shibeta?
Uh, none for me. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay. Um Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I have it in my notes that two thousand eighteen dash one eighty-four dash eight through two thousand eighteen dash one eight-seven uh dash A Palermo Street was withdrawn.
Yeah.
By the applicant. Uh I I believe it might be like a mix-up, some mix-up for the DOT because they they said that the previously uh submitted uh PBB was like closed. So I I would urge the applicant to communicate with them and get to the bottom of this.
Mm-hmm.
That's all that I have. Thank you.
And uh okay, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I had nothing further.
Okay.
Okay. The next case is calendar number two and twenty-twenty-one dash forty-eight A and twenty-twenty-one dash forty-nine A, forty-two and seventy-two Schmiege Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay. Uh finally, we were waiting for um the filing of the secret application, which was submitted in uh January of this year. And a phase one report uh was also provided uh based on DEP comments. We have also received a letter of no objection from uh fire department, which was way back from uh twenty twenty-three. And right now, we have uh pretty much all the sign-offs. Um so I was going through my notes, and I believe one of the things we had asked the applicant was to provide a clarification regarding community boards concerned based on the comments that were raised at the last hearing that was held um back in February twenty-eight. Um so the applicant ended during the uh public uh hearing um provide a little clarity as to why the community board was concerned about this project. Uh in addition, uh when I was going through the environmental review document, um there uh there is a active uh DEC um freshwater uh wetland permit, which was granted in December of twenty twenty-one. And it was renewed back in uh February ninth of twenty twenty-three um for this project. And uh I I think should the board uh go forward to grant this project, the applicant needs to um abide by all the DEC regulations and permits and also needs to obtain a new uh permit, DEP uh DC permit, because it could probably would have expired uh by the time we go through this paperwork. Um those are my initial comments. Uh Vice Chair Shibeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I believe that community board's concern was with regard to traffic and how development would affect traffic. Uh but yes, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say with regards to that. I have nothing further.
It would affect uh the neighborhood. Okay, thank you. Um by um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Um Commissioner uh Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further for me.
Uh Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. Um yeah, only to second what Vice Chair Shibeta said. There is um there are some land use committee minutes from their meeting discussing the nearby intersection and um just generally traffic concerns. And that's in our testimony file. I have nothing further on this case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for um for clarifying that. Um this is what happens when you have a project that's been lingering for so long, you forget, you forget the history. Thank you for looking into that. Um next case, please.
Calendar number twenty-twenty-two dash eighty-nine A and twenty-twenty-two dash ninety A, sixty-one dash ten Menahan Street and sixty-one dash twelve Menahan Street, Queens.
So this is a GCL thirty-five uh application. Initial hearing on this application was held in November. Um uh specifically November thirteenth, and the applicant has provided um response to the comments that were raised um at the hearing. Um regarding the firm map, the applicant states that the site was not in the flood zone and uh and has provided the firm panel map um for that. Um the applicant has clarified the easement matter, um which was also stated at the initial hearing. Um I think um we just need um I don't know what the status of uh the review is from fire department, DEP. Um any update on this? Um uh is, I think it, this is Jaleen.
I don't have an update at this time.
Sorry, uh I didn't hear you, Jaleen.
Um I said it's still pending. I don't have.
Okay, it's still pending. Okay. Thank you. All right, um. Vice Chair Shibeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I um just add, I did follow up on and did a small uh site search on whether or not this property has any easement on it. I did not find anything to suggest that. I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Commissioner Artley Brown.
I have no additional comments.
Uh Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I uh yeah, the uh regarding the firm map, they said there is no actually a firm for the site. And what they enclosed is a firm index, not a firm panel map. It's a firm index.
Okay. And you're okay with that, right?
With that, yes.
Okay. Uh Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I have no comments.
Thank you.
The next application is calendar number twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-two A, twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-three A and twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-four A, fifteen twenty-three and twenty-nine Radigan Avenue, Staten Island.
Hey, this is a GCL thirty-five case. Uh the initial hearing on this application was held on November twenty-seventh, and board had asked for more clarification uh related to the plan and the statement. Um we also received a letter from Department of City Planning um uh stating why a subdivision is no longer required uh for the zoning lot since uh the site is less than one acres. As you may recall, there was a recent um text amendment um that affected the South Richmond Special District. And as part of that, um uh sites less than one acre do not require a subdivision review at the Department of City Planning. Um the um applicant has also submitted an approved builder's pavement plan. And uh in that uh distance from the nearest hydrant to the front door also has been provided. It was something uh fire department had asked for. Um and uh I don't know if we have a fire department sign off on this one. Uh however, as I was looking at the builder's pavement plan and comparing it to the proposed plan, um some of the dimensions are not corresponding with the builder's pavement plan, the proposed plan, that is. Uh for example, for lot one-one-nine um site three, uh the eastern side yard width per builder's pavement plan is nine feet, whereas the proposed plan shows eight feet. Similarly, the distance between the buildings on sites three and two is seventeen feet per builder's pavement plan compared to sixteen feet in the proposed plan. Uh the proposed nine-foot-wide curb cut for lot one-twenty-three, site one is not consistent with the approved builder's pavement plan. And also not clear why the curb cuts are nine-foot wide when eight-foot wide would be um sufficient uh for um for such. We have seen plans where eight-foot-wide curb cuts for such uh development and densities have been proposed. Um the applicant's architect states uh regarding the DEP requirement um 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 for thirty-six foot uh thirty-six foot wide sewer um that um due to the ownership of the lots, um this um that the sewer extension and the water main extensions are both located inside the property lines, but within the paved portion of the street. However, for the sewer corridor, um uh it cannot accommodate thirty-six-foot wide um um corridor as asked by DEP since it would encroach about seven foot six inches within the proposed new building. Um according to the biz, there was a builder's pavement plan for lots located across the proposed development along Radigan Avenue for lots twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-five. So my question is, when those lots were developed, and these were built very recently, um I do not recall if that came before BSA. Um i- is there an existing sewer line along Radigan Avenue? And how was it addressed for these lots that are located across the block front? And um I I understand that a building a thirty-six-foot-wide easement within the portion of your zoning lot, which is twenty-foot portion of the of the side of the street, and an additional uh sixteen-foot wood encroach onto the proposed building and would leave very little uh wood. Uh I mean, the building footprints are already quite on the thin side. Uh so it would affect it. Why can't uh the entire um easement be within the bed of the street of Radigan, including a little bit of the sidewalk? So um and if this these buildings were built, I'm sure some sewer connection would have been provided. And I don't know if that, I I would like some clarity the uh on that. So that's really my question and comments, and hopefully it can help the applicant getting a resolution with DEP. Um Vice Chair Shibeta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just want to add that they did respond to the first set FDMO comments. Uh they've marked the by-hydrants on the plans. And um also they did explain the need for the seventy-two oh one G waiver. Nothing further.
Okay. Um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I also am sympathetic to the property owner in in regards to their response to DEP's insistence on the thirty-six foot with sewer corridor. And I hope that your questions, which are probing questions, are then passed along to DEP to kind of help them to rethink and restrategize their approach here. And hopefully, there'll be a little more understanding and a little more giving and allow that sewer corridor, if it has to be, on this applicant's lot to definitely be made much narrower than it is. So it could enable the um construction of a viable development.
Right, okay. Thank you. Um Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with the board's suggestions regarding the uh sewer corridor. I I believe if if the lot is not gonna be like, it's not gonna be feasible to accommodate the thirty-six foot. And they said they can like just accommodate fifteen feet, and the rest of that will be outside. I believe it's worth looking at it from D U V. Hopefully, they can like list their proposal of the like get to the something intermediate to to let this project go forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add.
The next application is calendar number twenty-twenty-three dash forty-nine A, twenty-four Ross Lane, Staten Island.
Okay, um this is a GCL thirty-six uh. Oh. Yeah, sorry, it is a GCL thirty-five.
No, this is a GCL thirty-six. There was a typo.
There's never another one.
So is this a thirty-six or thirty-five?
Thirty-six.
It's a thirty-six.
It's a thirty-six. Okay.
He says it in in his letter and as well in the saving effects.
That's the thirty-six?
It's a thirty-six.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's kind of how I have it in my note. Thirty-six, right? Yeah.
Our lineup says thirty-five, but it's a thirty-six.
Oh, okay. Oh, the lineup says thirty-five. Right, I actually may have corrected myself knowing that it was thirty-six, but yeah, so our lineup incorrectly states thirty-five, but actually it is GCL thirty-six. Um so please take, uh please note that. Uh so the initial hearing on this application was held on um November twenty-seventh, and board had asked for some clarification. And um uh we did receive a fire department sign-off uh and um I really don't have anything else to say. The applicant seems to have responded to all the comments. Um Vice Chair Shibeta.
Uh I think one of the comments we made on the last date was to expand on uh the GCL thirty-six findings. But in response, the applicant said he had all the statutory language. I I don't know how the board feels about that, and I have nothing further to add.
Um I did receive, I did read the language. I I was satisfied with it. Um sorry, um Commissioner Artley Brown.
I'm satisfied with the application, and I have no additional comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I'm satisfied with the application. I just want to say that we today, we received an LNO from FDMO.
Right. Yeah, I just saw it this morning, and we have a sign off from Fire Department. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, I'm satisfied with the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Next application is for a new case, calendar number two thousand seventeen dash five A through two thousand seventeen dash seven A, six twenty A, six twenty B, and six twenty C, Sharitz Road, Staten Island.
Okay, we received proof of service of initial filing and hearing notice. This is an application to amend board's conditions. That certificate of occupancy be obtained by four years, which expired on September tenth, twenty twenty-three, for a previously approved GCL thirty-six to construct three non-residential building not fronting on a legally mapped street. The applicant is proposing to eliminate the time to complete construction or requesting a four-year extension of time. And the reason for the delay the applicant state is that, A, the construction has not started, and there has been financial difficulties, and of course COVID nineteen caused further delays. And the prior owner sold it to the current owner, so it's almost starting from, it's starting from scratch. And the current owner is working towards securing financing, which would take about a year or two. If I seem to recall, when I was on the board, we were reviewing this case, we actually thought this kind of business operation was kind of novel and new. And but the use was permitted, so it was not questioning the use, but we just thought it was a new kind of a business model. So I think it will take some time to get the financing in place and get going on this site to construct, especially given the change in the whole business model that we are seeing post-COVID. However, I'm not comfortable about eliminating the time to complete construction. I do think we want to, this needs to be like any other project where we grant a four-year extension of time. Sorry.
I'd just like to note for the board that the four-year timeframe to complete construction is a zoning-oriented seventy-three eighty and seventy-two twenty-three control. And in some instances, for larger GCL thirty-six developments, the board has granted on condition just that a certificate of occupancy be obtained without timeframe.
Thank you for the clarification. Vice Chair Chabatta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with the limitation on the extension to four years. I do, I would also like to know a little bit more detail on what kind of progress is currently being made towards that end of completion. I understand that they're saying they're planning on receiving financing within a year. If they have any other further plans on how they plan on moving forward with this project, when they believe they're going to have a shovel in the ground, that would be what I'd like to ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Artley Brown.
So I would prefer to retain oversight over this project until CFO to ensure that it does get built and built according. And I'm fine with four years. And if they have to come back, then they have to come back. I'm definitely sympathetic to their need to come back because of the financial difficulties, but they still should have that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I'm also in favor of extension rather than elimination of the term. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay.
This concludes the public review session for January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Will we be taking any intermission between the?
Let's usual, let's do a ten-minute intermission. We're at ten fifty-five, so let's make it eleven oh five. And the applicant can gather their team and start lining up.
Okay, so we will be back on the record at eleven oh five. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I bet them all.
That's very appreciated.
Okay, we're going to begin within a minute.
When I retire, I'll get a job.
Springer, we ready?
Yes.
Okay, everyone, we're about to go live again. We are live and we are streaming.
All right, good morning, good morning again, everyone. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for January twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. We will begin with the special order calendar, continued hearings.
Calendar. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Calendar number two forty one dash seventy two dash B Z one thirty two through one thirty six, East thirty seven three and two eighty one through two eighty seven Lexington Avenue, Manhattan.
I believe it would be Mister Becker. And last time Mister Aubrey Phillips.
Mister Phillips is no longer with the, so just myself at the moment.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners Frederick Becker, I attend, I.
Mister Becker, we need to swear you in.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm? Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Well, good morning again, Madam Chair Commissioners Frederick A. Becker. Uh, I did attend your executive review session, uh, heard the comments, appreciate the compliments for our efforts and would like to respond to the questions primarily raised by Madam Chairperson. Uh, first, I would like to state that the whole basis for this request is for limited hours. Uh, we have, as mentioned early on, there have been lots of issues with vagrancy, uh, with defecation and other issues that have made this an untenable space and to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to revitalize the space, we do need those limited hours. So going back, uh, to the questions raised by the chair, uh, one, security cameras are, uh, cover the entire space currently and will continue to cover the entire space. So there's, uh, we do have that fully covered every square foot of the premises. With regard to the SSMA club, this club has been out of business for the past several years. Uh, there are no ongoing activities here. The building is a vacant building that is currently up for sale, so we can have no connection with any of their activities since they have no activities in that space. With regard to programming and outreach, as mentioned by Commissioner Yun on page two of our submission of December fourteenth, we have been in constant contact and have worked with in the past, uh, the St. Vartan Park Conservancy, the Murray Hill Neighborhood Association, Community Board Six, Green and Clean Committee and Adopt a Tree Program and Keep Murray Hill Green and Clean Association, New York City. So we have been in active, ongoing conversations with them. However, as mentioned in that letter as well, it will take approximately two years for this, if we do get the limited hour approval from the board, upwards of two years to renovate the space, so we cannot provide any sort of programming at this point in time because it is way premature. I will say, however, that, uh, according to the district, the building manager, we have a new one and several board members. The space is currently used by nannies and their children throughout the day. Uh, there are several, uh, restaurants in the area, cafes, there's a new restaurant hotel cafe opening up across the street at the Sinesta, and people do currently use the space, uh, they bring their food over, they eat their lunch, their breakfast, whatever they like. So therefore, we do have an active, ongoing use of this space, which we expect to continue. And again, we cannot provide any further details of specific programming. Uh, the daycare center is a nonstarter, we don't have any connection, it's too many, too many legal issues to start to deal with. The space is not that viable, it would therefore preclude other people's use of the space. Uh, we don't have a cafe in our building, we're a completely residential building. And therefore, we think that we have addressed the issues, we think this is a viable space, which will become even more viable, and it's not just yoga in the back, it's, you know, children's performances, it's children's reading hour, uh, hopscotch, all sorts of activities that can go in that minimal space, which the chair has admitted is rather awkward, given that there are four columns in the middle of that space and throughout the building. So based on that, I'm available for questions and, uh, appreciate your concerns and thoughts. Thank you.
Um, can you tell me where the hopscotch, uh, hopscotch place is?
All right, so if, again, if you look at page, let me get back to here, if you look at page P dash two, where we talk about the multipurpose area, we talk about yoga, exercise area, hopscotch, et cetera. This is an area that would not have tables and chairs, but would be an open area for various activities, as opposed to the front portion of the premise of the space, which has tables and chairs for reading, sitting, eating, et cetera. So that's, the multi-space is not just a yoga space, it's, it's something that the community has discussed as potentially using once we renovate the space for various activities that could be, uh, brought about by the various groups that we mentioned in our cover letter, who might schedule activities at that point in time. But right now, there's, again, it's, it's, it's being used, but nothing organized.
Okay. Yeah, I go by this site quite often, and I'm happy to hear there are entities within the area that do use this space. I have unfortunately never seen it, um, but it's, uh, I'm glad that somebody's making use of this space. Um, I would strongly, strongly suggest, if it is at all possible, I understand that SSMA building, you know, you don't have the connection and, and the ability to do any discussions on this matter. Just be on a lookout and, and, and the entities that you're talking to are, I think, good entities to start off with, especially with the community board and the council members' office. Uh, oftentimes, they also know entities who are looking for spaces, um, uh, and keep that, uh, and see how it can be activated with, uh, programs, um, and such. I, and I do appreciate the effort that, that has gone into this design, but, uh, it would be lost if it is not made more inviting and, uh, and activated.
Well, again, we, we've said, you, you saw the plans, we've changed the fencing to glass, which makes it more inviting, we all new lighting, all new painting, artwork, new furniture, so that it is our intention to make this a desirable welcome space. And again, the SSMA is defunct, they do not exist, it's a non-entity at this point, it's just a building.
Who owns the building then?
Uh, I believe the SSMA still owns the building, but they don't operate, but there's no use of the building, it's, it's been for sale for years now.
It's one of those sites which is not even ADA accessible, so makes it a very difficult site for it to be attractive for any community space.
No, the, the space is totally ADA accessible on, it's at grade.
It's, no, it's not, there's a, there, there are a couple of stairs that leading down.
Lexington, there's a flat entrance.
Oh, there is a flat entrance?
No, Lexington, Lexington, Lexington is at grade, it's only when you start going down Thirty Seventh Street Easterly that there are half a dozen steps. But we are at grade, um, at, on Lexington Avenue.
I was just there the other day, and I don't think that's the sense I got. Oh, and by the way, while I was there, I did notice garbage, um, bags piled up at the backside, um, towards the rear of the arcade area. Again, these are elements that makes the space uninviting and attractive, so, and that, that needs to be addressed in a manner.
That, the problem with that is that the homeless keep depositing trash and other things, uh, that.
No, this, this is, this is not a homeless trash deposit, this is very much a trash well, um, curated, uh, by somebody.
I will address that with the owners.
Yeah.
But then we, uh, we really, we are hoping that you will allow the limited hours so that we can proceed with all of the upgrades.
Right, I, I don't think the commissioner has had any concerns with limiting the hours, uh, it's this in return for that. Um, limiting the hours was not the only solution, and that's why the board was pushing for, uh, change in the design. Um, to make sure even for those periods where it would be open to public, it would be used, and the only way to make it usable and attract, and it, and would be to make it attractive, make it inviting, make it safe, make it visible. And those were the, eh, elements we were trying to achieve, and, and I believe your design has, has worked towards that. Um, however, I do think the activation of the space through programming is going to be another critical component, which I understand is going to take some time.
And, and we are, we are eager to do that, we want to make this inviting to the neighborhood, and again, it's, it's currently, we, more so than it has been, so, um, we appreciate your thoughts on that.
Any questions or comments for, uh, Mister Becker? Uh, yes, Commissioner Yun?
I'm just sharing a photo I took when I was out there last year, just to show how this, this is on the sidewalk on Lexington, so there's an entrance here at the corner.
Right.
And then there's, um, this, which is used as kind of the main entrance to the office spaces. And this is all flush with the public right of.
Yeah, right. No, I'm talking with the SSMA building, the SSMA building.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were.
The SSMA building has two, three steps that go down, um, and then to access it, unless there's another separate way to enter to the building. Right now, um, it, it, as you can see, it's, uh, it's a little bit below grade.
Right, I apologize.
It's not that great, yeah. So which, which is what makes this site somewhat difficult to, uh, you know, given the ADA compliance or the requirement, makes it somewhat difficult. Uh, so whoever takes over has to figure out a creative way to make it work. Yeah, uh, but that's not your headache, Mister Becker.
Thank you. So does the board have any, I, thoughts at this point, if I may ask, as we have various ideas we've discussed as to hours of operation that the board may have?
Sorry, um, so the hours of operation, I'm just gonna go back to my note, um. So your proposal is to, uh, currently it's a twenty-four hour, and you're proposing to amend the hours from, um, that to seven to eight, uh, seven AM to eight PM, April first to October thirty first, and seven AM to six PM from November first to March thirty first, which is similar to, uh, the Plaza hours, right?
That is correct, yes.
Right, um. I'm, I'm okay with that, I, as a matter of fact, I think I would be okay, um, yeah, I think seven to six for winter, um. Yeah, seems reasonable to me, I, I think I, I rather, I don't want to create any new, uh, conditions, as, this is a standard condition for any Plaza, and we can apply it here.
Thank you very much.
Is our commissioner is okay with it? Okay. Oops, what happened? My screen just did a funny thing. Okay, uh, let's go to the public, if there aren't any questions or comments for Mister Becker.
The application is, uh, calendar number two forty one dash seventy two dash B Z one thirty two dash one thirty six, East Thirty Seventh Street and two eighty one dash two eighty seven, Lexington Avenue, Manhattan. Um, you may dial in by telephone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or if you are, um, joining via Zoom, enter the webinar ID eight thirty five seven six eight three one four four two, passcode nine two one four nine four. Um, you can raise the Zoom hand at the bottom of the screen, or you may press star nine if you're dialing in via telephone to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
Okay. Um, so Mister Becker, you said it would take about two years?
It, we would like to do it sooner, but this is a co-op and an expenditure of several hundred thousand dollars, uh, takes a while to process through the co-op, uh, finance. So we're hoping that it will, we, we would anticipate it should be done in approximately two years, correct?
Yes. Um.
But we, probably we will start to, it'll go, we don't have set stages, but we will start slowly but surely moving along is the answer.
Okay, I would suggest, um, I, I'm going to recommend that we close, if that's okay with all the board members, everybody's agreeing with me. Um, but I would like a little bit of a timeline, uh, proposal from you, uh, more like from the architect and, and the management, because I understand it's a co-op board, you need the financing, and as part of the plan, you know, the architect will have to revise the plans, I do not know, does it require any DOB approval, um, to make these changes? I don't think so, but I do not know. Um, and my concern is, this is my concern, and I'm being very open about it, is that I do not want moment we granted, the hours of operations are changed, and those, um, and, and, and the those glass things are put in place, or some other temporary measures are used to put in place to enclose it, but the improvement doesn't happen because of financial issues or other things. So I need to have a very clear outline of when this realistically can be done, based on the financial, uh, commitment of the co-op building and, and all the other approval process, if any needed, and, uh, and to process um, and to implement it, to build it out, uh, what will it take? So I need that, and, uh, based on that, I am going to can, put a condition.
Okay, um, first of all, thank you very much for that, I, I understand the concern to, yes, not, and I don't, I think it's a matter of good faith, we would not do, put up the, and then sit, you know, put up the, the panels and then sit with everything else. I would like, I will get a, uh, timing and financing issue a little stronger for the board, I can submit that probably within a week or so. Uh, I, as the chair says, I, these are all, uh, aesthetic changes, lighting, painting. Uh, so I did, I would not think any DOB approvals are required, but that's not my bailiwick, um, and yes, thank you very much.
Okay. So if everybody's okay with that, I make a motion to close, um, but keep the record open for you to provide the timeline. Um, and the commitment. I would also like a letter of commitment from the co-op board stating that they would be pursuing this, uh, given what they understand to be the process and the timeline.
Yes, I will provide that.
Motion to close, Chair Chanda.
Um, aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Um, this is closed.
Um, and we will get back to us, oh, oh, I'm sorry. It will, how long will it take for you to get this information?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay. Um, we will get back to you as to whether we can put this on for February hearing or not, okay?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a new application on the special order calendar. Calendar number one twenty-two dash ninety-five B Z one fifty-two dash sixty-five Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
All right, this would be Chris Wright. Do we see him here? Yes, I do, I'm gonna change him to a panel, panelist. Yes, I think he should be in.
Good morning.
Uh, good morning, uh, is there anyone else from your team, or are you the only one?
I'm the only one.
All right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Thank you, you may proceed, please state your name for the record.
I'm Chris Wright, uh, Law Officer Christopher Wright, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, just quickly, I listened to review session, I want to thank you for your kind words on behalf of the applicant, I think they've done their best, and I'm, thank you from me too, and I don't have any other further, any further comments.
Okay, any questions or comments from Mister Wright? Um, I, I think there was one question that Commissioner Sheta had was that, um, he wanted to know how the performance of the design of the wall is going, um, you know, in terms of maintaining, we are just more academically, we are curious, because we have been recommending this solution to many other projects, so we want to make sure what we are recommending is successful. Um, so that's why we are kind of curious.
Um, sure, um, I, I'm not a construction expert, but I've been out there many times, I think it's been built according to all the designs and the windows and the lighting, uh, and, and I think this applicant takes it very, very seriously, it's, it's, but there's still, we don't have the CBO, so, you know, we haven't done the full study, because I think the BSA resolution requires six months after the, um, the CBO's issue to issue a report, a traffic report to DOT, and, and my clients will definitely do that. Uh, and so, and right now, it's, they're operating under the limited hours, and they're not fully operating, they're, they're not using the mezzanine space, which is their office workers, so then I, there's no office parking in the exact parking lot we're concerned about. And so I don't have any study at this point for that reason, but I, you know, they will, they will, once the CBO is issued, and it's taking a little longer there, because the wall took some time to build, um, they will comply with the BSA resolution to send in a study to, uh, DOT.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, we just remain curious if, if you have any information for future, uh, let our.
As the board said, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you know, this seems to be something you're citing for other cases, I think it's an excellent design. You know, I, I encourage, you know, I, I think it gives you, you know, it's a, it's a, and now it's, it's a full wall, but the lighting's designed correctly to stay away from people, there's like the creative solution with the glass at the top to, uh, provide a little more light and air and other reasons, and I, and I would encourage you, but I, I believe this applicant used the best to build this thing, they wanna, they wanna fully operate this, uh, building.
Yeah, and I really do appreciate the property owner taking our comments to heart and, and putting it to the, uh, and implementing it in the way we envision it, so do, do extend our thank you, um, to him. Any other questions or comments for Mister? Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wright? If not, let's go to the public.
This is, um, if any member of the public would like to provide testimony. Um, this is calendar number one twenty-two dash ninety-five BZ, one fifty-two dash sixty-five Rockaway Boulevard, Queens. Uh, you may join via Zoom, uh, enter the webinar ID, which is eight three five seven six eight three one four four two, passcode nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in uh, via telephone, six four six five five eight eight six five six is the telephone number. Um, you may press star nine to raise your hand once you're in the Zoom room and press star six to unmute.
I don't think anything needs to be submitted. I'm going to recommend that we close this and schedule this for the, can we schedule for the February, early February? Okay.
I appreciate that. I have to be here on your calendar of February twelfth, I think, so.
You don't need to, you don't need to be there, um, you, um, we, we are just going, it's a vote that we are going to take.
No, I understand. I just always, I always listen to the vote anyway. That's just my style.
The February twelfth, the calendar.
I'd appreciate that.
So we just need the clock to run out and then.
Um, I'm, I'm, I have the clock going, so.
And just to say, I, I won't sign in on the twelve. I'll just follow it on YouTube. Don't worry, I won't sign in.
Okay.
Okay, we have less than a minute left.
Okay, time is, yeah, and we're done?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I then make a motion to close?
Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta. Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
This application has been closed. And the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next application is also a new case on the special order calendar. Calendar number one eighty-nine dash twelve dash BZ ninety-eight Montague Street, Brooklyn.
Um, oh, you, you let them in, okay. We have Kurt. Kurt Steinhaus, who else? Uh, Judy.
And Jason DeJonger.
And who else?
He's, he's on, we're all here. Thank you.
Oh, everybody's here, got it. Go ahead. Needs to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You may proceed. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, Kurt Steinhaus with BCLP representing the applicant. Um, we heard your comments at the review session. As a preliminary matter, uh, we understand that there are some internet websites that make it look like the hotel is open, but, um, it actually is not in operation yet. Um, so we just wanted to clarify that. In terms of the amount, uh, you also asked for some clarity, uh, about the timeframe for the work to be completed. As indicated, um, uh, we have a potential buyer and understand that it would take approximately two years because there will be a new hotel operator. Um, but construction is quite far along. And so, um, uh, yeah, I'm actually going to share my screen now. Um, because you also asked about, um, the status of interior photos and we are happy to submit these. Um, as you can see, uh, there is, uh, construction is again quite far along with the hotel. And the remaining construction has to do with building out the restaurant space. Um, and just to clarify, the restaurant will be operated by, uh, the hotel. The reason that we're asking for the full four years though is because of this, uh, because the buyer is still, um, potential. And the closing is scheduled to happen in early February, which is why we're asking, um, for a decision um, at that time, but we're, uh, requesting the full four years because it would take additional time to locate a potential buyer should something happen. Um, with that, this particular buyer is, uh, willing or ready, basically ready to complete construction as soon as the closing happens. Um, there was also a question about, um, violations. We submitted a violation history. Um, there are a few open violations, but again, the potential purchaser, um, is ready to correct all of those. And almost all of them are basically paperwork violations.
Okay. Okay, uh, any questions or comments? From. Uh, Mrs. Steinhaus, is this your first presentation to the board since you left us?
It is. Happy to be here.
You did well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's go to the public.
The application, um, that we are discussing is calendar number one eighty-nine dash twelve BZ ninety-eight Montague Street, Brooklyn. If you would like to, um, provide any testimony on this application, you may join via Zoom. Uh, the webinar ID is eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in via telephone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. Um, please press, um, star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Um, if you would like to speak, thanks.
Um, Mrs. Stein, Steinhaus, just for the record, do submit those photos of the interior. Um, thank you for sharing those with us. Um, I actually have no other questions, comments. I, I want the, if we don't hear any concerns, uh, my suggestion would be that we close it and we schedule it for the earliest February, um, decision. Okay, everybody's nodding in agreement on that.
Thank you, and we can submit those today.
Yeah.
I'll let you know when the clock runs out.
Uh, I think we keep a two-minute clock, right?
I thought it was three minutes, but someone can, I'm not sure if someone can let me know.
It's, it's two minutes to call in, but three minutes to testify.
Uh, two minutes to call.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I seem to remember.
Yeah, okay, so we have another minute then.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Uh, we just have one more minute to go. Oh, you finished?
Um, I don't see anyone called in and the time has run out. So, um, motion to, uh, I'm not sure if you want to close, actually.
I want to make a motion to close.
Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta. Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
This application has been closed.
Thank you. Good seeing you, Mr. Steinhaus and everybody, of course.
Thank you.
The next application is on the appeals calendar, continued hearings. Calendar number two thousand eighteen, one eighty-eight A and two thousand eighteen, one eighty-nine A. One ninety-four dash twenty-eight and one ninety-four dash thirty-two, Dunton Avenue, Queens.
I think this would be Alexia. Don't see Alexia.
Um, I don't see anyone from Lope Bell's office.
Do you do Zoom raise hand feature to, uh, present on this application?
Um. Can someone reach out to Alexia?
Do you want a second call?
Let's just see if she can join in. If not, we may have to second call it for tomorrow. We have a pretty long agenda tomorrow.
So you just want to crush it with your mouth?
This is just a perfect blend of all the elements. If I don't after eating this, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Is anybody, were, were, uh, was anybody able to reach?
Madam Chair, uh, this is Carlo. I, I sent an email just now, um, but I have not yet received a response.
Okay, let's do one thing. In the interest of time, let's, uh, do a second call. We'll call this towards the end of the, end of today's hearing.
Okay, and I will put in a phone call now to the applicant's office.
Right, okay, thank you.
I, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I also sent an email as well, but Carlo will call, so we'll call this at the end like the chair said. Um, so the next application is also a continued hearing item. Calendar number twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight A and twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine A, forty-two and seventy-two Schmiege Avenue, Staten Island.
I thought I saw Mr. Dale. Oh, he's John, okay.
Good morning.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Dale. Is there anybody else from your team?
Just me today.
Okay, please proceed.
Um, so I did listen to review session and it appeared the board had, was satisfied with most of the questions, but there was a question regarding the community board report. Um, it has been a little time since we did the hearing. Um, as I recall, we spoke to it way back when, but I'm happy to speak to it again. Do I have the ability to share screen? I just wanted to show something. Okay. I'm going to show this here. Um, I believe what you should be seeing now is from Google Maps, an overhead view.
We are.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that, um, you know, just to clarify, well, as I recall from the community board, this was a very, um, split issue. And I believe the community board ended up, the, the vote was fourteen to thirteen, so there were definitely parties on each side of this. Um, the issue that was raised with respect to the traffic, though I respect the concerns raised by the community board, we note that this is a as-of-right use, it's a low-traffic use. And also, the area of concern cited here is where I'm circling with the mouse, Boscombe Avenue, and they were talking about the entrance to the West Shore Expressway. And backup traffic was here, and there was a photo submitted that's actually facing west to the bridge for the Outer Bridge Crossing. This area right here is the area of concern that was cited. Schmiege is all the way over here. Up here at the corner of Veterans and Arthur Kill. So, um, you know, I'm not going to speak as an expert on this particular intersection, but I would say that for an as-of-right use that is a significant distance away, we don't believe that this will cause any any issues, uh, of merit, um, you know, with respect to, to the questions that were cited. And as noted, it was a, it was definitely a split issue there, but this isn't as-of-right use, it's a low-traffic use. And, um, I don't believe there were any issues with respect to access cited by any other agency. So I'll stop that share now. How do I stop the share? I'm not sure. There we go.
Thank you, um, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And as you also heard, um, Commissioner Yun, I think was able to find, uh, some documents from the land use committee report, which all stated the same traffic was.
More, I don't know that it called out that specific incident, but it was traffic concerns.
Right, um, and with regards to the DEC, um, when would the permit run out? February ninth, twenty twenty-three run out? It's every two years, right, or one year?
I believe it's every two years and I think that there was a new one that was renewed, as you said, February. We'd agree to any condition should the board choose to grant that the DEC permit needs to be renewed and then conditions need to be met. So I believe we're still within the window and if it expires during the development process, we would definitely get that renewed. So we'd agree to any condition about that.
Okay. Hi, I just want to state that, um, the last, um, permit said that, um, they'd reached their renewal limit. So they'd have to file a new permit on May, if any work was done after May fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
By two thousand twenty-four, it has to be filed.
It said a new permit will be needed after May fifth, two thousand twenty-four. They can't just renew because they renewed several times.
And that would be May fifth to, uh, twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
So they need to get a new permit or need to file by, um, May fifth?
I can check that.
As I say, I think my understanding is the permit is valid through then.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. Valid till then.
Okay.
So, based on realistic development scenarios, they would need to file again with the DEC, but it would likely just be a resubmission of the same materials again and pay the requisite filing fees again. But we would agree to any condition about complying with DEC requirements.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from the board?
To address that, uh, these.
To address that, uh, DEC issue, if we can just add a note to the drawing saying that the scope of the waiver is limited to GCM thirty-six to the site plan, that would be like helpful, helpful in that alerting like any sister agency looking at the application, just to avoid confusion.
Okay, we could add that note and, but, uh, we, I would also suggest that we put a condition as part of our grant that, um, they secure all the necessary DC.
Yeah, my, my, my.
Double time.
Usually, usually like plan, plan examiners look at the drawings rather than the resolution.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Dale, can you make that, uh, add that note to the plan?
Sure, just to note that the scope of the waiver is for general city law thirty-six approval only.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sure, let me make a note here.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, let's go to the public.
The application that we are discussing is calendar number twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight A and twenty twenty-nine dash forty-nine A, forty-two and seventy-two Schmig Avenue, Staten Island. If you would wish, if you wish to provide testimony on this application, you may join via Zoom and enter the webinar ID of eight three five seven six eight three one four four two, pass code nine two one four nine four, or you may dial in via telephone, um, at the phone number six four six five five eight eight six five six. You may press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute. And I'm starting the timer for the two minutes.
I, I know. I believe, uh, Ms. Matias normally starts the timer before she gives the instructions. The two-minute time. Um, uh, could you repeat that? Again, what you said, yeah? I'm, I'm just noting that Ms. Matias, uh, usually starts the timer, people to call in two minutes before she starts speaking. Um, she starts giving the instructions, so that might be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Um, I do want to note, um, the applicant for the previous application is in the waiting room, so I know you wanted to call it last. Um, but just letting you know.
I think since we have already made that call, that it would, we would second call it for after, we only have three cases and they should go quickly, so unfortunately, the applicant may have to wait till the end.
Okay.
Yeah, we, these should.
Okay, the time is up.
Thank you. Um, so I would make a recommendation that we close, and, uh, please revise the plans and just, uh, if you could provide a cover letter stating what you stated regarding the DEC and the community board.
If I could just ask a quick question. Um, for general city law thirty-six approvals, the board generally will just stamp the site plan. And I noticed, I was just taking a look at the last plan set, we have a site circulation plan, a site plan, and then there's a zoning analysis page. Um, if, if we put the note on the site plan, is that sufficient? Alone? I just wanna double check. Yeah, so we'll just put a note on the site plan itself saying approval, uh, for general cities law thirty-six only. That's okay.
Let me just look at the plan.
I'm just afraid if we put it on the zoning analysis page, it's gonna get lost in there, so maybe putting in the site plan is more suitable, just to make it stand out a little more.
Oh, wow, it's been a while since we have seen this plan. This is proposed plan dated nine nineteen, right, twenty twenty-two, nine nineteen?
I think we submitted it January fifth to the record. Let me take a look. The last date I see is in the, yeah, no.
I think the one that I have is, um, what is on the plan? Uh, six nine twenty-one is the last amendment to this plan, a, as far as I, I have in.
Yeah, I see six nine twenty-one for the zoning data page, but if you look at sheet, uh, BSA dash oh oh one point oh oh, that has a December tenth, twenty twenty-one revised per BSA comments.
Ah, um. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. So, if, if, unless there's objection, I would, I, I would suggest we put on the site plan, so it stands out a little more.
Um. Site circulation plan. Is any objection if we were to not include site circulation? Just trying to. No, you know what? I do want the site circulation plan to be included because I remember there was a concern we had, because there were going to be two separate operation, and we wanted to make sure there was a, uh, that it would not result in, um, some or the other. Some, some way the circulation being limited to one side, uh, on each side of the parcel. And, and that is critical in ensuring that there's a smooth flow of, of circulation happening and not causing a backup, um, on Schmig.
Sure, so I, I, sorry, I don't want to delay or hijack, Curry. We, we can do this offline. We'll submit the revised plan. If there's any questions, we can work with the project manager.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Um, there was, there was that reason why we wanted that, and it was for that reason. Okay, thank you.
Please also update the EAS, uh, with the final plan.
Um. The executive director has his hand up.
Um, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, and just for Mr. Dale, if, uh, again, if the board is requesting more than just the site plan, will be approved if, if just the dates are coordinated correctly, um, as one set.
Yep, no, the dates are all on there. Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Sure.
And Ms. Benke, you want the, uh, the, uh, yeah, EAS to be revised with their updated plan?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, Mr. Dale, how long will it take for you to do all of these corrections, um, revising the plan, revising the EAS cover letter?
Um, the plan, I think that plan, no, we could probably get it in by the end of the week. I'm just trying to take a look at the we have the phase one that was submitted. I don't see the site plan in there. I was just trying to double check that, but that should, that shouldn't be an issue. I we could submit, so this could be ready for the February hearing if there's space available.
Okay, all right. Uh, we will try to put it in the February, but I cannot commit to the.
Understood.
We'll get back to you. So in your cover letter, you will, uh, state the community board and the DEC thing.
Oh, to put the community board? Sure.
Yeah, what you stated, what you stated to the reason.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments if that, uh, if not, let's make a, uh, I make a motion to close.
Chair Chanda.
I.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Atlee Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
This application has been closed. We will continue with, um, another continued hearing item on the appeals calendar, which is calendar number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-nine A and twenty twenty-two dash ninety A, sixty-one dash ten Menahan Street and sixty-one dash twelve Menahan Street, Queens, I believe it's the same applicants.
Um, Mr. Dale, do you have anybody else, uh, regarding this one?
Uh, no, just me today.
Go ahead, Dale.
So, uh, I did listen to, uh, the review session, and there weren't any uh, significant questions. As noted, I'd like to thank the fire department for getting, uh, the letter in. Um, I would just note two things. First, uh, with respect to DEP, our last submission did address any of the dimension issues that were raised. DEP did raise a question about the drainage plan modification um, with respect to some potential theoretical sewers that have actually run underneath the existing buildings because it is within the bed of a map street. Um, and our request had been that the drainage plan modification be a condition of approval due to the timeframe. Um, you know, for, for doing that, uh, typical to some other applications that have been before the board, but uh, outside the drainage plan condition, we're satisfied that we have responded to any of the dimension issues that were raised by DEP. And with respect to the easement, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Shabeta for doing all the research. Just so the board's clarification, because I'm sure this may come up in other issues. The easement issue that comes up is issue with the Department of Finance and the tax map. When we submit tax maps, the Department of Finance doesn't have the ability to designate, um, the boundaries of map streets, so they just use the word easement, which has caused a lot of difficulties for us and other applicants because it is not an easement, and the Department of Finance maybe isn't as uh, articulate in the term easement, and so they just throw easement in when it's the boundary of map street, but it's not actually an easement. So that's where this confusion started with the easement because of the Department of Finance, uh, terminology. It'd be nice if they could come up with another classification that they could add to the map to, to spare us all this issue.
Thank you for that, uh, explanation. Appreciate it. But, um, where are we on this? Fire department is, is Miss, uh?
Oh, did the fire, sorry.
Chief Daley on the do, no, Chief Daley is.
Maybe I misspoke. I thought the fire department had issued a letter, but maybe.
They didn't. Did fire department issue a letter? I don't see it on.
John Daley, uh, Chief Daley is, um, raising his hand and being let into the room.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything.
I may have misremembered. I apologize.
Okay, um, is Chief Daley in?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, I am, uh, now. Um, yeah, the, the fire department has not issued a, a letter on this project. We do request that the, the applicant, Mr. Dale, if you could put a note on the plan, uh, between along the length of the, the nine-foot wide, nine-foot one-inch wide, um, distance between the existing house and the proposed no parking at any time. This way will allow the, the fire department to access to the front and rear of the proposed dwelling. Is that possible, Mr. Dale?
Sure, so let me just, let me just double check.
Sure.
So I know exactly where we are.
Okay.
Can someone share the screen with the plan?
I can share it, just one second. Let me share the screen here. So this should be the Menahan plan, I believe the last one of record. And so right here, as we're talking about this, this no parking in this area.
Um, it, it, out to Menahan Street. From Menahan Street, mm, to the rear of the, uh, proposed house.
So basically, just to clarify, this area here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All the way to the rear or just up to the?
No, all the way to the rear.
So we'll, what we can do is I can ask the architect maybe if they can, all right, so we'll designate that area as no parking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I will, I will reach out with them and we'll designate it somehow with a note and perhaps some, some marking.
And, uh, can I request that once you submit that new plan, if you could CC me on this, so I can prepare our letter, uh, immediately.
Definitely, okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dale. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, that's helpful, and thank you, Mr. Dale, for showing us the area. This makes it clear for all of us. We don't have to go back and forth.
No, no problem. I'm happy to do it. I've, I've learned how to do rectangles on PDFs, so I've got shit put up.
Good thing it was not a circle, right?
Exactly.
Okay, um, so, um, I, I know on the, uh, uh, DEP we have, um, this is amended drainage plan. And remind me, it's been a while since we have put in that request. I think it's been more like, um, uh, amending the drainage plan prior to the issuance of TCO or something like that is what the board had conditioned in prior grants.
I believe so, and I think if it helps the, the, the board and project manager, I think Ocean Avenue may have been a application where this was a similar condition. The calendar number is twenty twenty-one dash fifty-three and fifty-four A, and that might be, uh, helpful for reference as far as using it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, do we need any other sign-off from any of the other agencies? We don't need it from DOT since this is oh, the, but this is a thirty-five. Do we need it from DOT? I always get confused. No, we don't. Do we?
Yeah.
We do, right? Yeah, that's what I think. Uh, and where are we on the DOT review on this, uh, Jaleen?
Um, I have to get back to DOT. I don't think that I got anything back from them in recent changes. I'll have to contact them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Please do follow up. Um.
Have, have the applicant responded to the March thirty first, the last year?
Uh, March thirty first. Oh, there was a DOT comment and?
I believe we got comments dated March thirty first.
I I believe we had, with all respect to DOT, the initial comments we had received from DOT were regards to items that weren't within the property and weren't the issue that was before the board. And they were speaking about things that would be handled through a builder's pavement plan later in the process. Um, you know, this area is private property and it's outside the scope of DOT's review. DOT really should just answer the question of whether this is supposed to be part of a capital plan that's upcoming. Um, you know, I don't dispute any questions that might be needed later with respect to Menahan Street, but Menahan Street is a city street and DOT can do what they will with it. Um, we'll, we'll obviously need an approved builder's pavement plan, and we would agree to, you know, doing that, that's a condition of any development. Um, but DOT's questions in brief just weren't really relevant to the issue at hand.
Um, I'm just trying to get to the plan. Sorry, just give me a second. I'm trying to, um. And these are existing curb cuts. You're not proposing any new curb cuts?
Correct.
These are build, curb cuts?
Think they're, actually, I mean, I believe that there may be a new curb cut at the rear. Uh, let me. Yeah, second. Seems like a climate.
Yeah, it seems there is an existing drop curb.
The most of them are like graphical changes to the plans.
Okay. Um, yeah, so we can just put a note that i- if any builder's pavement plan is required, it, it shall be um, provided and, and, and approved prior to issuance of TCO.
And we would gladly agree to that condition.
It should be approved. It should be approved and built prior to issuance of T C O. Approving doesn't get us anywhere. Needs to be built. Uh okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale? Uh, go ahead. Who? Did somebody want to speak? Alright, if not, let's go to the public then.
If a member of the public wishes to speak regarding this application, the application calendar number is twenty twenty two dash eighty nine A and twenty twenty two dash ninety A sixty one dash ten, Menahan Street and sixty one dash twelve, Menahan Street, Queens. Uh you may join via Zoom. The webinar ID is eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in via the telephone at six four six five five eight eight six five six and press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute.
So um when was the latest submission submitted to D E P? Mr. Dale?
Uh I, I'm not sure what was submitted to D E P. Our final submission, uh our most recent submission was the end of December, but that was the firm index that we submitted. Um I'm just trying to see. We did include a note in the December twenty sixth submission that that all the dimensions requested by D E P had been included on the site plan of record. Um and also requesting the drainage plan condition should the board grant the application. So that was our our office's last reference to uh anything relating to D E P. Um as far as the plan where we made those changes, I believe that was submitted. I think the last site plan was submitted, let me double check here, with was was with a notice of comments. And that was August twenty twenty three, so that would have been the dimensions, yeah.
Okay, um. I think we need some time to get all the necessary signups from D E P Fire Department and also D O T. I just want to know where D O T is on this, so um we cannot close on this, um but uh please work closely with, I know you do, uh with our project manager and uh and let's see where we land with all the necessary signups.
We'll submit the requested um fire department changes shortly, probably within a week or two weeks at most, and then um we'll just hopefully, I know the fire department, back to us quickly. We'll wait on the other agencies.
Right, I know Chief Daley is very good at that. Um, all right, did we already call the public?
Yes, we did, and the time ran out.
Okay, all right. So unfortunately, I cannot close on this, Mr. Dale.
Understood.
Uh let's keep each other posted and um then we will try to, I would like to schedule this when we know we have pretty much all the sign offs, so then we can uh wrap it up then.
Understood.
Okay, um thank you. The next application is on the appeals calendar. A continued hearing for calendar number twenty twenty three dash thirty two A, twenty twenty three dash thirty three A and twenty twenty three dash thirty four A, fifteen twenty three twenty nine Radigan Avenue, Staten Island. Um Elise has her hand up. I'm promoting her to panelist. Hello, Ms. uh Fullidare. Um do you have any other members from of your team joining?
Um yes, uh there should be a David. Maurice.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, he should be joining shortly.
David, if you could un, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon.
I guess we don't need a square end because it's an A case, right?
That's right. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, David Maurice. Oh, sorry.
Well, Elise Fullidare with David Maurice on behalf of the applicant. He's um on behalf of the architect. And um I'm gonna let him share his plans so he can go through with you your questions because I think that seeing them would be incredibly helpful. Let me know if you got it, Dave.
Yeah, one second. Is that visible?
Yeah, and I think you have to do a little plot, like get closer because.
I will, yeah, yeah, sure. Alright, yeah, um so uh we listened to the review session and it was a couple of comments about the paving plan um with some of the dimensions being different from the site plan. So I I I think it's just how it's labeled on here. I'll zoom in um. So like as, for instance, the between uh this second lot one twenty two and lot one nineteen, the second and third building, uh the paving plan is showing a seventeen foot wide curb cut. But the buildings are actually sixteen foot wide apart, so like if you could see the dotted line goes up for the seventeen feet and then it's everything's in six inches on on either side, so it's actually a sixteen foot space between the buildings that matches our site plan. Uh same for this curb cut. It shows a nine foot curb cut. And then that's in a foot, you know, uh to the uh left side of the building, so uh there there is an eight foot side yard which is shown in our site plan.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, um and then.
Why did, can I ask you why the width of the curb cut is nine foot? We have seen in similar projects of this type, eight foot was sufficient.
Right, um so typically we try to make the minimum nine uh just because of uh the actual use of it. Uh we've had a lot of clients say that it uh that the eight foot or even the nine foot is not large enough, like a lot of people have you know, large SUVs now, um and it's just very hard for them to pull into the driveway into the curb cut without going over the curb or driving, you know, a portion to the planting area, so that's why we try to leave it, the curb cuts a little bit wider.
And this is nine foot width plays?
Width plays, correct.
Okay. Alright, go ahead.
Okay.
And then the last.
Yeah, go ahead, Elise.
You can say that. I was gonna just add that you did the buildings across the street so you can
Right.
shed some light on.
Right, so the other comment about D E P, um so we we designed and the buildings are built in C of O to cross the street. Uh there's no sewer on Radigan, so what was done with these is there is an internal easement with a sewer line that connects all of these houses to a sewer on Bombay Street. Yeah, Bombay Street's here, so that they all go in and connect here uh in the backyards is a ten foot wide easement, so they have no connections to sewers uh fronting Radigan. Um, in terms of what was stated earlier uh during the review session, I think that would be the best uh thing to do would have, would be the thirty foot wide, thirty four foot wide uh paved area curb to curb plus adding another, even adding two feet into the the proposed sidewalk. Uh that would, that would be a thirty six foot wide corridor as uh D E P is requesting. Um so I think going back to them and proposing that, which we did, but I guess we're still waiting for their comments um. But otherwise, you know, as you stated, you know, the the thirty six foot wide corridor would be in uh inside the building footprints by about seven and a half feet. Uh and and the south side of Radigan Avenue is already owned by New York City, so all of this is, you know, already owned. Um so I think that would probably be uh the best way to get that thirty six foot wide corridor.
So and uh where would that corridor be located? Can you just uh highlight it in this?
Yeah, let me, yeah, I could draw something on here, so. Uh so the 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 curb to curb width is thirty four feet, so we can do it from the curb and two feet. Basically, I can't get it exact here, but let me just make this a little thicker.
Okay.
So it would be, you know, that area, so it would be two feet pretty much beyond the the new curb uh to be installed on the side.
And so part of it will be under the sidewalk also.
Right, it would be, yeah, yeah, about um, I guess the curb six inches, so it'd be uh one foot six uh into the sidewalk.
Okay. Since you own the property, you were not own, you built it. It's kind of shame that it was not coordinated in a way where this entire easement could have been on the entire um Radigan from not only curb to curb, but beyond the sidewalk to accommodate the thirty six foot. Um.
So we I also spoke with the engineer who filed um the sewer connection with D E P and he thought that it was um typically they don't ask for something that wide. So it was another uh option for them to go back and to ask for a reduction in the width of the thirty six foot, so maybe it can then just be within the better than, you know, the street, you know, between the curbs.
Okay. Well, um I can't speak for um D E P, um because maybe their policy has changed from what it was before, maybe thirty five, and we have seen thirty five, right? Typically, D E P asking for thirty five or so. So um, you know, um you would have to work this out with D E P and until we have that, uh we cannot um close on this project.
Mm hmm.
That is a critical component of this uh application.
Right, I know, I know Elise sent everything over to them a couple of weeks ago, we, yeah, we just haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. Okay, um, any questions or comments? Any other thoughts? Alright, let's then go to the public.
Can you please stop sharing the screen?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Um, the application that we're discussing is calendar number twenty twenty three dash thirty two dash A and twenty twenty three dash thirty three A and twenty twenty three dash thirty four A, fifteen twenty three and twenty nine Radigan Avenue, Staten Island. If a member of the public wishes to provide testimony on these applications, um you may join via Zoom. The webinar ID is eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Um or you may dial in via telephone, six four six five five eight eight six five six is the number, and you may press star nine to raise your hand or and star six to unmute.
Okay, I actually, um I wanted to make sure um Fire Department is o- was okay with the response that was provided, uh which was specifically to um providing the dimension distance from the nearest fire hydrant to the proposed uh entrances. Uh the Chief Daley, um I don't know, Chief Daley had a chance to review the plans.
Well, I'm, uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um I am meeting with the our city planning unit to review this uh application and the issues that were brought up today, um we'll bring it to their attention and uh try to respond back as quickly as we can. Thank you.
And the issue is uh it's the dimensions, right? That I think that was the question that Fire Department had raised.
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um and do you, how, have you had much discussions with D E P on this?
We went back and forth and we re-submitted with the B S A submission date. That's the date we provided D E P. And we copied D E P and F D N Y and then Jaleen, I believe, sent it to them in the format that they wanted it. And followed up.
Okay, alright, so so Ms. Fullidare, you know this, we just cannot do anything else. Till we have the D E P sign up on uh have that resolution uh addressed. Uh that issue addressed, sorry. Okay, um.
Okay, the time is up.
Let's, we need to, I would suggest that we try to schedule it uh um closer to when we do get a um D E P approval on this, hopefully a D E P approval on this.
So, and we understand that whatever, like hopefully we hear back from D E P soon, so whatever timeline they say, well, we understand that, that's.
Yeah, and keep keep our project manager posted on that so that we can schedule it accordingly.
Well, she's following up with the D E P, so whatever she tells us, we'll.
Fair enough. That's a good point, yes. Alright, thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next application is calendar number twenty twenty three dash forty nine A, twenty four Ross Lane, Staten Island. Um it's Mr. Dale again.
Good afternoon. I did listen to review session and it appears that the commissioners were satisfied and there were no other questions. I'd like to thank uh Inspector Daley for getting the uh sign off letter into the record. Uh happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Um, any questions or comments? Let's go to the public then.
The application that we are discussing is calendar number twenty twenty three dash forty nine A, twenty four Ross Lane, Staten Island. Um if you wish to provide testimony on this application, please uh you may enter via Zoom. The webinar ID is eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in via telephone, six four six five five eight eight six five six is this telephone number. You may press star nine to raise your hand once you're in the Zoom room and star six to unmute.
I'm going to recommend that we close this. And Mr. Dale, we'll get back to you as to when we schedule it, whether we um early or later February, February.
Understood, thank you. I think she's fine. Yeah, the next.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have Danton.
Okay, the time is up.
Okay, alright, uh make a motion to close.
Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Right.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Shetta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
So the application has been closed.
Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Thank you.
The next application is a new case on the appeals calendar. Calendar number two thousand seventeen dash five A through two thousand seventeen dash seven A, six twenty A, six twenty B and six twenty C, Sharitz Road, Staten Island.
I think this would be, Mr. Dale?
Correct.
Yes.
Um, thank you so much, Elise Fullidare.
Anyone else from your team?
Oh, no one else, no one else. David can log off if he hears me. Okay, go ahead. Uh uh Elise Fullidare from Eric Palatnik P C. Thank you so much for having us today. Um we heard your comments and I just wanted to give a little background and then we understand respectfully whatever it is you want to do. Client understands respectfully whatever it is what you want to do, but um G C Ls, as Chase pointed out, often didn't have a time. They just go with whatever the zoning resolution and the D O B said, and they didn't have this extra B S A time limit in them. And what we were trying to do here is because this And what we were trying to do here is because this client is struggling a little bit with getting finances in place, which they're currently still struggling with. And the times where they got it approved right before COVID and struggled through that. We're just trying to get a little bit of the burden of financials out of the way. Because coming back before the board over and over again can be a little bit financially burdensome. So they understand whatever it is you want to do totally, but they were just, we're looking at precedents. G C Ls did not even have times and now just trying to get rid of some of those extra elements like hiring Eric Palatnik P C, even though.
Yeah, um, thank you for that clarification, appreciated. But as our general counsel pointed out, that in, in some G C L cases, especially larger G C L cases, we have followed the similar four year extension process that we have exercised for other special permits and variance cases. So I think in this case, given that some of the concerns that the prior board had about the possibility of, we definitely want to keep a close eye on it and ensure it gets billed. And, you know, we understand the risk of this project and we had, we had expressed that risk concern even at the initial application was filed. And we want this project to succeed. And should there be any change or anything along the way that needs to be, you know, after four years, come to us and we will look into it, should you need it. I don't think you should feel that four years is the do or die and it shouldn't be that that's, yes, it would be great if you can get it completed, but we recognize the risk you have here. And we recognize that you would, you may need another extension. I'm just putting it on record that you may need another extension and we are open to it. I, I mean, I can't speak for the future board, but this board is open to it.
Well.
Thank you. Any additional comments, General Vine, you want to add to this? No? Okay, if there aren't any questions or comments for Ms. Folada, all commissioners shaking their head saying no, let's go to the public then.
The application that we are discussing is calendar number two thousand seventeen dash five A through two thousand seventeen dash seven A, six twenty A, six twenty B and six twenty C, Sharitz Road, Staten Island. If you wish to provide testimony for this application, you may join via Zoom. Enter the webinar ID eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in via telephone, the number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You may press star nine and enter your participant. You don't need to enter a participant ID and press star nine to raise your hand once you're in the Zoom room and star six to unmute.
I'm going to, I don't think there is any additional information that we need from Ms. Foladair. So I'm going to suggest that we close this. And can we speak? Okay. And we'll, we will, from our end, we'll expedite it as much as we can so that you're, at your end, you can start the process. And you have a new owner, I, that's my understanding, and I believe the owner is trying to secure financing. I hope what we state today helps in your honor to secure the necessary financing.
And we will send them the video as well as the resolution when it is.
Yeah, please do, thank you.
The time is up.
All right, so I'm going to make a recommendation that we close and we schedule this for decision on February twelfth.
Okay, Chair Chanda.
Hi.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
This application is closed.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, have a great day. And now we will, we have one last item that was on the calendar earlier today. And I will call this item the second time. This is calendar number two thousand eighteen dash one eighty eight A and two thousand eighteen dash one eighty nine A, one ninety four dash twenty eight and one ninety four dash thirty two, Dunton Avenue, Queens. I do see Alexa, Alexia, I'm sorry, Landisman in the, in the room. And Ms. Landisman, do you have any member of your team joining you?
No.
Sorry, there's somebody by the way. Sherry Hexel, still. I just don't know if that.
No, I believe I'm the only one from, from my applicant team. First of all, my apologies, I was trying to log on Zoom and I got on right after you guys finished the application. However, we did listen to the executive session and you guys were looking for clarity on the builder's pavement plan. So we have filed a revised builder's pavement plan. The problem was that D O B was refusing to review it until, until they received the B S A resolution. So we sent over our, our B P P to D O T to review, but D O B hasn't, hasn't opined on it yet. So we are happy to provide.
Go ahead.
Sorry, oh, sorry, I was going to say, we, we read through the letter this morning. I'm still waiting for the architect's okay on it, just to make sure that everything is accurate and they're not missing any information. But as far as I understand, we're happy to comply. And if that's really it, I'm hoping that we can close today pending, you know, the finalized D O T letter.
Confusion, you know, we, we, we already are reviewing some cases where we have an approved builder's pavement plan. And based, and then we compare that to the site plan to make sure the site plan that goes to D O B is consistent with the builder's pavement plan. To hear that D O T requires the B S A approval to review builder's pavement plan is a little confusing to me.
Yeah, so it's D O B, I mean, this was, this was told to me, we filed our B P P and it was rejected upon the grounds that B S A needed to weigh in on this. So I believe it's probably because of the G C L factor. And so I'm not entirely sure, I'm happy to schedule a call with D O B on it if necessary. But the B P P has been revised and has been submitted to D O T, so they have a copy of it.
Okay, and the comments that we just, the draft letter that, that I see, I think you're referring to the same draft letter.
Yes, 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 so. I'm waiting, I'm waiting, oh, sorry, please, sorry.
Good, I, I guess my question was the draft comment letter had some recommendations that needed to be reflected in the plan. That should also be reflected in the site plan. Has that been done or will it be, and if not?
I, we received the letter this morning, I forwarded it to the architect. I'm still waiting for her to review to make sure that those changes have all, if they have been already made, we'll, we'll note those to D O T. And if not, we'll, we'll obviously revise them and abide by the comments. But I'm still waiting for word on my, from my architect before I opine on, on the status of the plan.
Okay, so based on that, you will revise the site plan and build a space and but you would submit it to D O T, but D O T will, according to D U S statement. I would suggest Council Vine and, and to Mr. Costanza, if you can reach out to D O T and find out what their latest policy is on this builder's pavement plan, because we have a case just now, we closed on it, where we have a builder's pavement plan. Oh, no, actually, we didn't close on it, but it was a Radigan one, which has a builder's pavement plan. So we need to have a consistent setup and we need to get an understanding on that. The reason I'm a little confused to, a little concerned about site plan going before the builder's pavement plan is because we want their site plan to reflect what's in the builder's pavement plan in terms of curb cuts and any other, you know, requirements of parking, no parking and other things. And since this is a draft letter of duty, I don't know if this is going to be the final letter. But if this is a draft letter, that I don't know if duty will have additional comments, which will warrant another change to the plan.
So we've submitted the revised site plan pursuant to D O T's comments and a revised builder's pavement plan. So as far as closing the matter today and then making sure that D O T actually has no objections and addressing those comments, we're happy to do that before decisions issued. But I believe that the letter said that, that D O T had no objections, you know, assuming that all of these comments have been addressed, which we're, we're happy to get on another phone call. Tony and I have been working with D O T to try to get this expedited. And so they, I'm, I'm happy to hear that they've issued this letter this morning.
I, I know we, we have had this case in our pipeline for a little too long. I'm as eager to close this and is, are the commissioners okay with, with this notion of closing this? And then making the revision to the site plan. But I still am a little concerned about the builder's pavement plan not there.
I personally am okay with it. I do think we have some cases where the B P P is not approved yet. I think that's quite common and it is filed on D O B. I mean, I see it there, so it's all true. And it is a letter of no objection, assuming that those conditions are met and that the B P P would be reviewed by D O T in the process of the D O B review. So I feel like the controls are there to, I don't know, prevent any concern on my end.
Okay, so you feel confident?
I feel okay, okay, ready to close.
Commissioners, everybody seems to feel comfortable with it, okay? I'm going to suggest to Commissioner Yun to one day give me a very good crash course on this timeline and process. No, seriously, I, I really do want to understand the timeline and how the builder's pavement plan, everything works out. So that we have, all of us here have a clear understanding.
But, okay, yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's go to the public.
I apologize, I didn't realize I was unmuted. The application that we are discussing is calendar number two thousand eighteen dash one eighty eight A and two thousand eighteen dash one eighty nine A, one ninety four dash twenty eight and one ninety four dash thirty two, Dunton Avenue, Queens. If you wish to provide testimony on this application, you may join via Zoom and enter the webinar ID of eight three five seven six eight three one four four two. The passcode is nine two one four nine four. Or you may dial in via telephone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. You may press star nine once you're in the waiting, the Zoom room and star six to unmute.
For the edification of the board and the record, upon information and belief with respect to the approval of B P Ps under the G C. It heavily depends on which borough you're in. So as instructed, B S A staff will reach out to D O T.
Ah, okay, thank you. So I'm looking at a builder's pavement plan that was submitted back in twenty twenty three, October twenty twenty three, which. So I don't have anything, anything that's more updated than that on our, on my.
That's the latest plan, that's the latest builder's pavement plan that D O T had reviewed. And we had filed that with D O B and D O B issued.
Okay, so I don't think we have then the latest drawing that was filed to D O T based on D O T comments, so that should be provided.
I, I sent Tony a submission pretty recently, I want to say three weeks ago of the latest. I think we were having this exact discussion, she wanted to make sure D O T had the latest versions of everything. And I'm happy to resend, resubmit that as well to, to B S A submit. Just the latest version of the survey, I'm aware of the site plan and of the building, builder's pavement plan. Just so everyone's looking at the latest version of the plan.
You read my mind, yes, please submit all the latest, latest set of plans to D O T. Builder's pavement plans, site plan. Do we have a sign off from Fire Department on this?
Yes, I believe John, Chief John Daly is shaking his head, yeah.
Okay, can can you also just submit that as part of your submission?
Yes, I'll go through the records and see.
Fire Department had no, okay, our, our council is saying Fire Department had no objection.
Okay.
This is what happens when you have such a long.
It's a very long case, yes, no, I think we're all very excited to see it.
I believe Fire's letter of objection came once Palermo was withdrawn.
Yes, and it's a conditional one, yeah.
The Fire Department did say they did not object to the application for Z C L thirty five. Yeah, okay.
Okay, the time is up.
All right. Okay. All right, so I then make a motion to close. And you will submit all the latest set of documents for completion and the site plan, of course. And that should be consistent with all the various D O T comments, the latest D O T comments. And we will get back to us to when we schedule this. For, it will take how long for you to submit?
We're hoping, I can submit this, you know, right after this hearing, because I have all of the emails already. So I'll just forward that to B S A submit. And as far as hearing back from my architect, I want to give her a day just to review it. And so I'll get back to Tony on that within the week.
Okay. I will try, I mean, we'll try to schedule for February, I do not know whether it can be the early or the later one.
Okay. That's fine.
The earlier one has a January twenty fifth submission due date.
Okay.
For Wednesday.
So maybe next, this Wednesday, right? Yes, I think it has to be the later one.
Okay.
To anybody in the waiting room who has appeared to testify but has not heard your case called, we have public hearings again tomorrow on January twenty third. Please listen for your case and we will call you to testify.
So make a motion to close.
Chair Chanda.
Hi.
Vice Chair Shabeta.
Hi.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Sheta.
Hi.
Commissioner Yun.
I.
This application is closed.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, we will get you all the documents expeditiously and have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, have a great day.
And, and for anybody who, who wanted to submit comments today and might have missed their call, please submit your comments to submit, S U B M I T at B S A dot N Y C dot gov with the application number and or address and the subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vine. All right, have a good day, everybody.
This concludes the public hearing for January twenty second, twenty twenty four.